Okay, good morning. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 1st, 2020 meeting of the Reno County Commission to order, please. Commissioner Bush will not be with us today, so it'll just be the two commissioners in attendance today. We'll start the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance. Would you join me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, due to the principle which is standing on one nation, under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't believe I have any welcoming announcements today, so we'll go on to our weekly report from Karen Hammersmith and Adam Weishire. Karen, would you like to join us, please?
Good morning. Just going over the stats as we have it right now. The prior week, we had a positive test rate of 7.69%, with a seven-day average positive test rate of 13.3%. We have a community positive test rate of 7.10%. That's without the inmates. We've tested 6,815. We've had 747 positive cases, 6,068 negative cases. We have 133 active cases as of this morning, six clusters. We've had one fatality. We have a total positive test rate of 10.96%. Population tested is at 10.84%, and we've recovered 613. As of this morning, I also looked, Reno County is ranked 12th in the state with the number of cases that we have had. We were lower on some of the mortality, which is really excellent. I think our healthcare providers are really getting in there and trying to treat everything, and continues to learn how to treat them. This last week, what we've really been working on is that positive test rate and getting out there and switching the medical thought process from just testing sick patients and trying to figure out how we can get more population tested. So, we're looking at a couple different things. One, we're looking at community testing and securing the funds to do that. And as soon as we have that, then we'll move forward with that. And that's gonna probably be late September, early October, and really try to get the community testing out rolling, as long as we secure those funds. On the private side, they're looking at screening versus, you know, testing somebody who has symptoms. So that changes how your insurance is gonna pay for that. So, as the medical communities can up that, they have to look at whether your insurance is gonna screen for it. And you have to have volunteers that want to have a nasopharyngeal swab. But in order to keep our community going, that's just the rate that we have set out. We can't really change the metrics. Nursing homes are also in this category, so they are saying they have like a less than five, less than 10, less than 15% gating criteria type of thing as well for a nursing home. That is to keep them open, and when I'm talking about open, I'm like, how many people can they come in? And, you know, are they shut off to all visitors? Can they even have the hairdresser come in? Nursing homes is probably our most vulnerable population. I think we've known that from the start. We've seen a lot of deaths across the state and the country in nursing homes. And what happens is then they have to do a lot more testing in those nursing homes with that positive test rate being elevated. So, they have to test their staff and then as well their residents. So, really looking at that, that's what we've been working on. The other thing is Bowercom. That is where we have said as a county, they're doing some initiatives for us. And a lot of that goes around advertising. We're gonna see some of that at the end of this week. So I wanted you to be aware of that. We've got about five different talking points. They've got personal stories, so they're reaching out to people that have had COVID, that are willing to talk, share their stories, that type of thing. And then also just a COVID collaborative, and that's people maybe as they're going through it, putting that on Facebook. So they're kind of sharing their personal stories, you know, on a day-by-day. They're working with that. We have some mask advocacy going on, so just trying to promote that in a positive way, just like we would hand washing and that type of thing. Keeping everybody on the same platforms as far as social media, you know, and making that look a little bit better, so that everybody knows where to look, and then it's user-friendly. And then the fifth thing, which I think is extremely important, is trying to get some physician updates and maybe get that out in the public. So, if we could get some of those physicians that are working with the patients and working with sick people, so the community knows what really happens with a COVID patient. It's different if you're in family practice and you're working as a primary care provider and you see somebody who's not very sick. It's a completely different view when you're in the ER and in the ICU and you're working with a patient that's on a ventilator. An ICU stay is generally about 18 days if somebody gets into the ICU. So, those are just different things that we're working on, and I just wanted to give you an update on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions, Ron?
No, not right now.
Okay.
I think we'll hear from some more.
Our doctor from Hutch Clinic's with us. Would you like to report, doctor, what you're seeing? We always enjoy, or not enjoy, but appreciate your comments from what you see at the clinic.
So, we're still seeing a positive test rate within our symptomatic patients who present to the clinic of above 10%. We had reached a high about two and a half, three weeks ago of 16% of those who were ill. And if we take that as an assumed cross-section of our county, if somebody were to have any symptoms of any kind, whether it's allergy-like, or cold-like, or pneumonia-like, it seemed like 16% were coming back positive. More recently, we're at about 10 to 11%. I can't say for sure, but it sure seems to correlate with the duration after the increased use of masks. And whether it's the mask directly, or the mask acting as a trigger for people to social distance, not hug on each other, those kind of things. I mean, all of our actions kind of change once somebody has a mask on, but it does seem to correlate with that. It wouldn't make sense for our positive test rate to go down if we're not doing things of safe practice. That's just not how viruses work. They go through a population until they burn out. We are not at the point of this burning out. We are not near the point of this being heard immunity or anything. So it's simply the actions that individuals are taking, I think, that are keeping it as low as it is. The caveat would be, individuals I'm seeing in the clinic tend to not be part of these large cohorts we're seeing. So that tells us a couple things. The virus spreads, and the virus spreads fast in rooms like this. You know, in the recent news, there's, not in the states, but a single infected person went in a small Starbucks cafe, 25 people positive. And it's due, they had a singular HVAC unit. So, cohorts are one thing. What I'm seeing coming in individually is a little bit different. But I'm thinking that's good news. That also puts us in a good position when we speak to the overall community positive test rate that Karen alluded to. I really do think we're in a good starting position that we can prove what our general gestalt is. My general gestalt is, I think keeping schools open is reasonable. But what I think doesn't matter. What I think does not stand up to scientific scrutiny. I'm not gonna put my neck on the line and have my head chopped off. You guys aren't. But if we have the measures to back it up, that's different. I truly think if we can grow our testing in more of a screening-type capacity, we will see less than 5% positive test rate, which makes complete sense. If we're including people in our testing numbers that are much less likely to have COVID, the number goes down.
Sure.
So currently, I would say I have a 10 to 16% confidence that every person who's sick in this community will have COVID. But that's just of sick. I want to talk about just the community at large. The evidence is all clear after, much longer than the two weeks I put in to learn about it, the decades of study on the epidemiology and statistics, that the positive test rate is the only real way to get your head in your hands around a pandemic. Karen did mention the payer issues. We're trying to figure that out. We want to get our schools open and our economy open. I also want to know, prior to doing this, what people can expect from their insurer, whether it's private insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, or uninsured. A lot of this is addressed in the CARES Act and the HRSA Act. It's up to interpretation when you get a lot of parties involved, meaning providers, patients, the insurers, the government. So we're trying to get those pieces put together. And our real hope is we can get to or approach that 5% or less positive test rate to keep the schools open.
Okay. I very much agree with what you're saying. I'm wondering, and doctor, maybe both you and Karen can address this. You're saying that we're waiting on funding for this additional testing. Randy, is there any way we can move some of these other monies to that so we can speed up? Because what you indicated makes total sense to me. The more the public that we test, the lower that number to help the schools stay open, and that's...
Yeah, it does two things.
A big deal. So, can we move some of our money towards this to move faster, Randy?
Not at this moment. We might be able to, can look into that, but we have to wait till the state of Kansas gives us feedback whether our initial application is approved, or if we need, we can then make modifications. And it would depend on what dollar amount is needed, but we probably could after that. And we're hoping to hear sometime this week about whether our application for the use of those funds is...
What about that other grant that was coming from the state that we were using for some health department items? Has that been funded?
There's a few grants right now. The separate ones the Health Department is working on, I'd probably ask Karen if she knows, if those have already been identified exactly what the uses are, but if it's the part of the Sparks Fund, that 12.6...
No, I'm talking about the $160,000 that was coming this way.
That one, I believe, was, we haven't touched that yet. We haven't been given the money yet. I think it's been preliminary approved, but they have not dispersed the money to us yet.
Okay. Karen, you want to comment on that?
So, we have already applied. It's a very competitive grant, and so we can look at using some different money that is out there with the CARES funding and that type of thing. And we have been looking at it.
Okay. Well, my...
Adam probably has more information directly on that.
Adam, you want to chime in here, please?
Community testing, something that we've been looking at for the past several months. The issue we've ran into with community testing before now was just the lack of supplies. I mean, it was challenging for hospitals or clinics, our normal testing sites to get the nasal pharyngeal swabs. And then our private labs were also inundated with the testing. Our preparedness person at the Health Department has actually received and gone over to Sedgwick County to look at their model. And then the Health Department put in for a competitive grant for community testing. Whether we get the grant or not, I believe that, working with Randy and working through the process, we can come up with some sort of community testing, but it simply is gonna take some time. We can't decide today that we're gonna start this tomorrow. We're gonna have to have all kinds of community buy-in to it as well, that people are willing to get tested, and kind of flesh that out too, what that looks like. At one point in time, even if we were starting community testing, that community testing was still gonna require everyone who gets tested to quarantine until their test results come back. I don't know if that's gonna be the case, but there's a whole bunch of stuff that we need to do in the background before I think we're ready to move into that community cycle.
Okay. Ron, have you got any comments? I know how important keeping schools open is to you, Ron.
Yes, it is.
It seems like this community testing can't do anything but help in that process. And so, my suggestion is to direct the county staff to do everything within reason, and maybe things beyond reason to make this happen as soon as possible. I guess I did not realize that we were restricted on that at this point, so...
I think that you and I just got lectured to this morning, Commissioner Sellers, by Dr. Polly, saying that in a small room, that since we approved masks, that we're not wearing masks.
Yeah.
And we require other people, school kids and stuff, to wear masks, but we're in a small room here, even though we're about, give or take, a few feet away from that. I would say that after the third generation, I call it third generation, it's been six weeks now since the mandatory mask went on, and I saw the sit rep this morning, it's still around 10%, if I read it correctly. We have not seen a decrease that we would have expected from the mask.
Well, now...
I think we need to look at this seriously, the fact that, are they really making a difference? Or it's gone up a little bit since from, it's gone up and down, okay? I just, I know we disagree a little bit, and we can quote science on both sides, quite frankly, and I think the doctor and Karen can see that science on both sides too. But I just, I think we need to take a serious look and see if this is really making a difference. Is it more hand washing, social distancing than it is mask-wearing? I think the health things, I don't want to see anyone die, a loved one, a neighbor, or anyone die. But if we look at what CDC just released, 94% of those people who passed away that had COVID had other health symptoms to go with that. And if the CDC tells us that, maybe we, and we don't want to see anybody pass away from whatever, but I think we just need to take a serious look at the mandatory look. If people, and we're spending $42,000 for an education system. Shouldn't that be sufficient enough? If people are gonna do that, they're gonna do it anyway. If you're sick, stay at home or wear a mask. If you have a health condition, stay at home or wear a mask. And be, do the other health things like Dr. Polly said. Is it from more hand washing? Is it from more social distancing? Is it being more careful when we go out of state, when we go out of county, when we're around people in a closed area? It makes, to me, it makes no sense for the school districts in an open area to not allow people to come in and watch their kids and grandkids and whatever play football. It's in an open area, we have data from Reno County already that says there are zero COVID cases directly related to three big events here that were packed. And so, anyway, that's my high horse today.
Dr. Polly, I think you'd like to say something.
Yeah, I mean, to speak directly to the CDC publication of really what we already knew, those with comorbidities are at higher risk for death from this. To me, that's like saying the sky is up and the ground is down. We've known that from the beginning. They pretty much just rehashed what we always knew. Some would say from the beginning, we should have really just quarantined all of those who are at high risk, rather than the whole population. That's an easy pill for me to swallow as a 36-year-old without comorbidities. So, if we look around the room, and I don't know people's health history, but if you're over 65, you have high blood pressure, diabetes, coronary artery disease, COPD, congestive heart failure, I could name a bunch. This room would have less people in it. I'm not sure if that population, those with comorbidities, understand that they're more likely to be part of the 94% than the 6%. It also tells me something else, if we think about it. So, of those who have died with or from COVID, 6% had no comorbidities. So let's flip the numbers. That tells me that there are people without the usual risk factors who have died from COVID. Depends on how you look at it. I'd like that to be zero, without saying too much, because my hands are tied ethically and legally. But in this community, we've had young people, no comorbidities, that none of you know about, with horrific outcomes from COVID. My hope with the Bowercom initiative and such, maybe we get some of those parties to kind of say what they've gone through. To me, statistically, it won't change a thing. But anecdotally, it does. And if me wearing a mask helps me not give it to one of you in my office after I'd maybe seen somebody before who had it, my mask is worth it. I'd never have any of our surgeons operate on you without a mask, because they work. Heck, I won't hang drywall without a mask, because it works. In the small...
It works partially on drywall, I'll tell you that from experience. It doesn't work 100%.
I'm not, and I have no investment in any mask company of any sort. But in the small examples that are out there with this, you will see pretty quickly gatherings of individuals in the ones lowest risk to contract the virus had masks on. Whether that's the mask itself, or the mask stopping the person from picking their nose and chewing their fingernails, I don't know. But our masks are a lot cheaper than other alternatives. In regards to the sit rep and the numbers, that's a little difficult when you include clusters and stuff. Those clusters occur when people aren't wearing masks. Go to Walmart, nobody's wearing masks. They might wear it when they go in. But I do think the mask and/or the changes that people undertake as far as hygiene, distancing, they kind of all go together for me, do matter. And for me, a lack of increase in the incident rate shouldn't be mistaken as a failure, because our number didn't drop. Clinically speaking, I'm seeing our numbers go down. Overall, our community might be stable, but you would have really seen that go up. If you would have told me six weeks ago what would have happened, if all stayed the same, our numbers would have kept going up. And that's partly opinion, partly anecdotal, but I just want to make sure we had both sides of the discussion.
I appreciate that, but we've seen a fluctuation all during the time, up and down, up and down.
Well, and Reno County has never got near as bad as Sedgwick County, and of course, they adopted their mask ordinance much later than we did. So, you know, Ron, it's like everything else that we've done on this since March. You can quote statistics on both sides of this thing. I've never seen so many facts that are facts in my life that are on both sides of the same issue. I guess, you know, we spent a lot of time, three or four weeks ago, talking about masking on students, and then we found out we had no control over that group. And we've seen the school districts mandate masks on their own, I think, almost exclusively. You know, I'm all for keeping schools open, and if by me wearing a mask is not that big a deal when I'm out in a public situation, I put my mask on, take my mask off, if we can do anything at all to keep schools open, I'm willing to take that extra effort, because it is such a huge thing for our young people. It's huge, in my opinion.
Not just the young people, but their working parents.
Well, and the working parents, it's just, they tried to do this online learning last spring, they're better organized for it, but it just doesn't work in total. And it won't work again. And so, again, I would hope that we can get this additional testing implemented so that we can prove that we're keeping that rate down to keep the schools open. Dr. Polly, one more quick question. I noticed in the sit situation report today, and then also I heard on the media, from your experience, are you seeing patients more susceptible that are heavier BMI over 30? I've heard this a couple times recently. In your area, have you seen that to be a situation of concern?
I can't speak to a specific situation, but in my mind, it makes complete sense. In many ways, we think of obesity as a risk factor for risk factors. So, let's use diabetes, for example. Those who are overweight are just more likely to have diabetes. And if you have diabetes, you're more likely to have coronary disease and subarthritis. So, the answer would be, it completely makes sense based on everything else we discuss in medicine. But obesity alone may not be the risk factor, it may be the risk factor for the risk factors.
Obesity and something else.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe this is a good time to include that within our marketing program. Talk about your health conditions, rather than just all the bad things. Talk about the health conditions and what you can do to help you handle the COVID. Maybe this is a good time, as well as reports from those who've had it, that have had mild symptoms. And I don't want to belittle this at all, doctor, because I've got a friend who spent a few weeks up here in the hospital from it. But here again, maybe this is a good time to talk about our health, overall health conditions with our marketing program.
I think you make a great point.
Yeah, good point.
There's innumerable health things we never talk about. And you're right, and we lose people every day. So maybe this, if there's ever a silver lining to a pandemic, if that's even possible, that maybe this brings to light that all those comorbidities we talk about, that the 94% have, that's stuff we try to fight every day. But it's always out of sight, out of mind. We blink and 10 years go by, and we develop these conditions that are essentially life-threatening conditions. Not just life-threatening, but threatening to our independence, our ability to work and live. So, you're right.
Don't get me wrong, I don't eat healthy much, that much either, but still, you know, there's other things involved besides just the foods. It's what you're doing.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Adam, do you have items today to talk to us about, please? Thank you, Dr. Polly.
Good morning, Commissioner. Typical update for me this morning. Adam Weishire, Emergency Management Director. This is day 185 of COVID. Way back on March 19th is when the commission declared a public health emergency, and we were covered with that until December 31st. Currently, all 105 counties have declared a public health emergency, and they also have current COVID-19 cases. We briefly touched on long-term care facilities. In long-term care facilities, they have 51 outbreaks, 718 cases, 75 hospitalizations, and 50 deaths. That's just in Kansas. And KDHT is reporting 17 additional outbreaks since Friday. That brings the total outbreaks to 170. The governor's orders are still set to expire. The governor's disaster declaration, in turn, her executive orders are set to expire on the 15th of this month. We have not received any updates or any different information from what we can look at after the 15th. The US is averaging approximately 40,000 new cases every day, according to the seven-day average. Yesterday, the US passed a 6 million mark, and that's 24% of the total cases worldwide belong to the US. If you look at the numbers, it took the country 99 days to reach the first million cases. That's on April 28th. Then it took 43 days to reach the second million, 2 million cases. Then 28 days to surpass the 3 million case mark, that's on July, or June, July 8th, rather. And then 15 additional days to surpass the 4 million mark on July 23rd. It took the US 17 days to go over 5 million cases, and then 22 days to reach 6 million cases. So again, it just keeps compounding on each other. September is the National Preparedness Month, so FEMA updated all kinds of information on their website, and you'll see some information get posted by us throughout the month, talking about preparedness countywide, and not even necessarily related to COVID, just preparedness in general. And then last week, Commissioner Hurst asked about how many counties fell under the executive order 2052. There's been 11 counties in Kansas that have officially adopted that executive order 2052. There's been 11 jurisdictions also have a specific order related to mask-wearing. 66 jurisdictions have not formally adopted any sort of order. And then there's 13 emergency managers who have not reported to the state whether their county has a mask order or not in place. That's all I have for you this morning. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Okay, is there any other comments, thoughts on item four? Not, we'll move to item five. Is there anyone in the audience today that wants to speak on anything that is not on the agenda? Check outside the room to see if we have any buddy that wants to speak to this. Buddy that wants to speak to this? Nobody outside? Thank you very much. Go on to item six is where we determine any additions or revisions to the agenda. Commissioner Hurst, do you have anything to suggest? I have none. I have none. County Administrator, do you have any additions?
I do not have any.
Okay. We did have some additions here recently to the agenda, thanks to the county counselor. If not, we'll assume the agenda is approved as written. Move on to the consent agenda for this morning. We only have one item on the consent agenda, and that's to approve the county's vouchers in the amount of $127,397.13. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
And I will second that. Is there any discussion? If not, please call the roll. Yes. Yes. Motion approves, is approved. Moving on to our business items for today, we have five items on this area. The first is a tabled item from last week because we decided to change the area that is being vacated on Mohawk Road. County Counselor and other people have been working on this to change this. And I understand it's ready for our approval. Joe, would you address this issue, please?
Yes. Commissioners, I have before you today Resolution 2020 hyphen 27, which is a revised version of the one we had last week. And as you know, it was necessary to do this because even though there was always going to be a cul-de-sac at the, at, at the location where the road was, Mohawk Road was closed, there was not enough road right-of-way off of the county property in order to allow a semi-truck to turn around. Therefore, we extended the, the cul-de-sac or put the cul-de-sac on, on county property to the north. And that resulted in lessening the, the length of the road that we're vacating from one-half mile originally, as, as in the petition, to, to exempting the south 235 feet of that. So, yes, I did work, we worked closely with Don Britton, who's here today, and Steve Lyman, the engineer with Aqua Terra SCS, to come up with revised legal descriptions for the roads to be vacated and for the easements that, utility easements that are necessary to provide Evergy and Ideatech for the, for the relocation of their easements, which at this time are located in the road right-of-way and will be lost to them when that road is vacated. So before you is the resolution. And the first, whereas paragraph on the first page recites the legal description for the road as, as it was presented in the petition. You'll find at the end of the resolution, on page three, a legal description of the road that we're asking that you vacate today. And the, the, what it does is it exempts the south 235 feet of the original legal description. So somewhat less than a half of a mile. It was necessary to, when relocating the, the cul-de-sac, to go a little bit farther into county property than might have been anticipated because there is a, a, a gas monitoring well right inside the, the county property line and, and very close to the right-of-way. And of course, we need to start the construction to the north of that because we wouldn't want a motor grader or, or semi or whatever having any contact with that. And furthermore, there are utility poles out there that belong to Evergy. And so, the cul-de-sac will require additional right-of-way, and part of it will have to be built between those two utility poles. It's not a problem, but we needed to locate this thing where it could be built. There will be additional right-of-way required to be dedicated by the county to the cul-de-sac area because the road is only 66 feet. And the engineer has determined that we need considerably more roundabout, or rather, road right-of-way to accommodate the, the cul-de-sac. I don't have those legal descriptions at this time. It's not necessary that we have that today, but you can expect it. We will be back with quitclaim deeds where the county will dedicate additional road right-of-way to the public. And that'll accommodate the size of the cul-de-sac that we need. So I would draw your attention to the findings that I'm proposing that you consider adopting in this resolution. On page two, certain, certain findings and conclusions, which I have gleaned from your prior discussions as to what we're doing and why we're doing it, including the need to expand landfill operations across Mohawk Road to the east, locating administrative offices and scale operations into that northwest quarter. It will require the daily regular operation of heavy equipment, such as earth movers to transport soil from the northwest quarter to the northeast quarter, where it will be used for cover. And that's across Mohawk Road right-of-way, thus creating a risk to public safety if Mohawk Road were to remain open to the traveling public simultaneously with landfill operations. That is, that is finding number five. This finds that the necessity for Reno County to expand the landfill operations, this is number six. Upon that portion of Mohawk Road right-of-way proposed to be vacated and the inherent safety risk created of vehicular traffic and public access were permitted across said road, the necessity to maintain the road as a public utility is not justified. This further finds a public access to the Reno County Solid Waste Facility will not be materially affected by the vacation of the described portion of Mohawk Road because of the availability of Clark Road, Mohawk Road to the north, other county secondary roads, KD96 Highway and township roads. We've made accommodations, as I mentioned earlier, to utility companies Evergy and Ideatech, whose infrastructure improvements are currently located in the proposed vacated road right-of-way. And we've negotiated with them for the relocation of that infrastructure on, on private easements, which the county will provide. Finally, a finding that has been added since last week is number 10. And that is that the construction of a cul-de-sac large enough for a semi-tractor and trailer needs to be provided at the north end of the road closure. And to revise the same, the south 235 feet of that portion of the road proposed for closure should not be vacated. And therefore, you find that Mohawk Road then, as subsequently described, with the south 235 feet accepted from the original description, is vacated. And this would be effective upon the placement of type-three barricades and road-close signs as determined necessary by the Public Works Department. If you have, if you don't concur with any of those findings, or you would, you would modify them in any way, or if you think there's something material that should be added to that, again, these are, these are factors that I, I glean from, frankly, discussions that have gone on for quite some time. And I, I propose them for your consideration.
So item 10 basically takes care of item one on this.
Yeah, it, it does because the original proposal was a half-mile in length running south. And we've, we've, we've reduced that by 235 feet on the south end. Don Britton's here today.
Clear it up for me.
Okay.
Is there a motion to put Resolution 2020 dash 27 on the table for discussion?
I would move to take from the table the item on the Resolution 2020 dash 27 pertaining to vacating a portion of Mohawk Road.
I second that. A couple of comments from me. I think that.
Oh, we need to vote, huh?
Yeah, we need to vote. Then I can take, then we can take a motion for it, if you, if you don't mind. I think that's proper.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Maybe that was already taken care of with regard to putting it back on here. But then I would move to approve Resolution 2020 dash 27 pertaining to vacating a portion of Mohawk Road as presented by staff.
We vote on this now?
Yeah, but I'd like to have some discussion if you don't mind. I think Commissioner Hurst improved this proj, improved this project by suggesting the roundabout. I think that's a significant improvement to this. I again think that, that since this is a 50-year project for the solid waste facility, if the road around the property would be effective and feasible, I think I would be inclined to approve those monies for that road. But it, in my mind, I think the road is just going to cause problems with the amount of dirt that's going to have to be moved across the, the vacated road. I think the project makes sense. We did discuss last week, and I'd like to make a point of it again. I think, I feel that we need to do more signage than is required by the signage code for those other roads to make sure that we don't get people trying to come in from the south and try to route them around in an appropriate manner. And that might even include something on Whiteside.
I think Whiteside and Blanchard both probably would be appropriate.
Don and Megan, please, I guess that's probably Don's area, but please work on that. Think that through of where we need to inform people.
Like the no-access to the, to the refuse facility.
And it would seem like to me, maybe on Whiteside, even the indication of go up to 4th Street or however you word that. So with those things, I think that this is the appropriate thing to do. Any comments?
Yeah, I don't like to close roads, make that known. But I appreciate the fact that you, you, we looked, took time to look at a cul-de-sac large enough to help those who might make a mistake. I, I, I would agree with you on the access road, but the turning factor to me was drainage. I could see stop signs and to allow for the cross-traffic. But the drainage from the facility to me, to have to put a, some type of bridge or large culverts, enough of them in to handle that, that was a problem for me for maintaining and looking down 50 years down a road. So that's all I have.
Thank you. No other discussion on this? Please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Item B, three utility easements for Evergy and Ideatech required by a vacation of the portion of Mohawk Road.
Commissioners, you have three in your packet, three easements, two of them for the benefit of Evergy. And it's to provide for, as I've indicated, the relocate, not the, well, portion of their, their existing easements will have to be relocated. And that's the portion that goes around the anticipated improvements, new improvements that are coming. Evergy's present utilities are on, on utility poles, and those will remain on that portion of the Mohawk Road that's vacated up to the point where the, you can see from a schematic diagram attached to the, the easement, the design of the easement, and you can see how it takes a 90-degree turn when you get to the improvements and it goes east out into the corridor section and then turns north up to Clark Road. And so, the legal description has been amended to start this easement where the, where the cul-de-sac ends instead of at the half-section line. The same identical easement exists for, for Ideatech. These are non-exclusive easements, which means that they, they will share the easement location. And these have been negotiated between the engineer for SES and the technical staff for Ideatech and for Evergy. Evergy's utility poles, well, when they, when they go around our improvements, the county's improvements on the northwest quarter, they will be buried instead of on utility poles. So that's good because that's where the earth movers are going across there. They would have to have been supported by guy wires. And so by burying those in the ground, at least as you go east across the Mohawk Road vacated, they will be buried, which is, I think, a good lick.
That took care of a question I had because I was looking at the space between the proposed building and the, and the easement. So, I took care of that.
And then Evergy needed an additional easement for a utility pole that's explained to me up at the north end of the road that's, that's being vacated. A utility pole that supports not only high-powered lines from the north and the south, but also across Clark Road. It's a, and they wanted to give them plenty of space to maneuver there. So that's why they have a second easement. And you can see it's for .16 acres. This versus the others are 2.45. So it's a relatively small area, and it's recommended that you approve those too. So if you, if you approve these and execute these easements, and I highly recommend it that you do so, we will record them with the Register of Deeds. And that should take care of the issue.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item?
I would move to approve the three utility easements for Evergy and Ideatech required by a vacation of a portion of Mohawk Road as presented.
I second that. Is there any further discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Joe, for those items. Our next item is a update by Brad Wright. Thank you, Megan and Don, for all your work on this project.
You know, Don, before you leave, excuse me, I should have thought of this earlier.
Called in by Commissioner Hurst.
I should have thought of this earlier, and I apologize. Is I, I would like to thank Don, Megan, the engineers, and especially Joe for the quick turnaround and timeliness of this to allow the project to move forward. So I know you spent a lot of extra time on it real quickly. And so I think that's very much appreciated.
Certainly. Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, Brad, we interrupted your presentation here. You have a procedural compliance results to give to us today, please?
Yes. Good morning, gentlemen. Brad Wright, Reno County Appraiser. I wanted to come before you this morning. You recently received a letter from David Harper, the Director of Property Evaluation Division of the State of Kansas, in the form of an email. I'm not sure that you received any more documentation other than just that cover letter that he sent out. This goes out to all 105 counties.
I believe all we received was the cover letter, or at least that's what I read.
That's what I thought this year, that, and this same letter goes out to all 105 counties. And I wanted to go a little deeper than just what you received from the director as far as the, the fact that the AdLauron valuation is the cornerstone of the county as far as taxes and the value that is received for the county to operate off of. Once again, the, we received a perfect score. We, we got 100 again this year. This is the fourth year that we have accomplished this. And as you can see by going through all the documentation that I submitted, as far as the man-hours and the legwork that goes into this, the deadlines we have to meet, everything that's involved, I just, contrary to what some people believe that in the Appraiser's office, we simply reach in a hat and pull out a number, and that's the value that we're going to put on somebody's property. It doesn't work that way. This is the formula and foundation of everything that goes into what we do. I am extremely proud of the Appraiser's Office staff. I hope that you're half as proud of them as I am. I've only been with Reno County now for seven years. I am extremely impressed with the departments here in Reno County, the staff that Reno County has, and the effort that goes into everything that the county does. I just wanted to bring that to your attention of everything that is going on right now. And if you've got any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
Brad, from my standpoint, the short time I've been. Brad, from my standpoint, uh, the short time I've been on the County Commission, it would appear to me that, uh, with your management and the other people in your department, that it's ran very, uh, well for the citizens of the county. It's, uh, very, uh, appropriate that you receive this 100% situation from the state. I know that takes a lot of work to do, and I, for one, as a Commissioner, appreciate the work that your department does. Every time that you come for us, uh, you, uh, have very factual and concise information, and, uh, I agree with you. I'm sure some of the citizens think that you, uh, pull those things out of the hat, but they, it, it is a very, uh, complex process, and I appreciate the work. And please give your, uh, employees, uh, thanks from the County Commission, please.
I can't add any more than what Ron said. Commissioner Sellers has said, except that I have heard from some people out in the, uh, within the county that have commented on how well they were handled by you and your department in answering questions and so forth, and their, and the attitude was positive.
Well, great.
Pass that along.
We want to thank you for all of your support, from the, all the way from the Commissioners through the Administration, and we will carry on.
Randy, do you have any comments on this?
Just that, um, you know, we're very proud of Brad and his staff for getting 100%. And they're all, I know they're always trying to work very hard to accommodate requests for information, complaints in the public, so they've done a great job.
Thank you, Brad, for being here. Don't believe there's any action needed on that item. Uh, our next item is an update from, uh, County Clerk Donna Patton and Elections Clerk Jenna Fager on their process for the upcoming election. I'd like to have you review the primary, please, with things that you saw, either good or bad, and, uh, maybe your help situation, and tell us about your thoughts for, uh, what's coming up here in the next two months.
Morning Commissioners, Donna Patton, Reno County Clerk, and I have with me Jenna Fager, my Deputy Election Officer. Um, the, the first thing we want to mention is there's a lot of mailers going out, and if you've already sent one in to us, you do not have to send another one. Right now, we've brought a part-time person in to try to match up all of the applications that we're getting, because we're getting two and three from people, because there's so many going out, and we obviously just want one in our files. So, um, we are doing that. So if you have submitted one, you do not have to submit another one. You can always call our office to make sure that, you know, if we, if we have received your application. Um, we mailed out 5,512 ballots in August, and, um, it, we had to hire extra staff to bring them in so we could open them and get them through our machines, but we did that without a hitch. Um, our audit, as you know, went well. We matched our numbers back up perfectly with that. We feel that we're going to have more than the 5,500 this election, because we had several send in the, the tri-fold applications that didn't want the primary but wanted the general. So, um, Jenna's going to call the post office as soon as we get those numbers and let them know, you know, you're going to be getting this amount on this day, so that will help them, you know, to kind of go through what's kind of going to be coming their way. We will be getting two more drop boxes from the Secretary of State's office. We do not know where we're going to put those, because we're responsible for the security on those, so it's not like we can just put them anywhere, because we have no control over them. And I don't want anybody other than somebody from our office collecting those ballots. So if, depending on where we put them, we'd have to send staff out three or four times a day to get those, but, which that's not a big deal. We can do that. The main thing is the security. We don't, we don't know where to put them. So we've been talking with Randy and Leslie, because she had mentioned it, trying to find some places to put them, but we just, we don't know where we're going to do that at this point. I visited with Harland, and he said he can put them in, you know, whenever we need them and wherever we need them, but it's the matter of the security on them and making sure that nothing happens to them.
Have you thought about using, for instance, uh, Mueller City Office or South Hutchinson City Office, or Haven City Office, or something like that, where they would be inside the office, would be a lot harder to.
Right.
Do anything with.
We like it.
And we are a mobile society.
Right. We like them to be outside, because a lot of people can't get there during hours. We'd never lock ours up. Once we mail out ballots, they're open 24 hours a day, so people can drop them off at any time, even on the weekends. Um, the problem with putting them somewhere else, again, they have to be mounted down into cement, so they're going to be a permanent structure. They're not just something that can be used during election and then pulled away, because we have to put them down into some permanent structure, unless we put them inside. But I don't know how much good that would do. It, that may be something that we may have to end up doing. We did think about South Hutch, you know, if they had a cement area that they wouldn't mind just drilling down and attaching it to, but, yeah, we could put it inside some of the buildings, that might help.
Well, the South Hutch City Office is, I think there might, there would be room down there if they would.
Yeah.
Allow that, and that spreads them out a little bit. I'm trying to think of something in the northern, you mentioned something in Mueller.
I just, off the top of my head.
It, it, it's interesting, Don. I had, uh, an email from someone during the primary that said, "I, I don't want to go in and vote, and I want to, I really don't want to mail it in. I want to, I wish you had a box," and I indicated to him we did, and they, they were so pleased, because they felt like that was how they wanted to do it, was physically take it to your collection box. And with these other two, if, if we could get them located, I think it would be important.
Yeah, and, and we would be okay with that if we could set it in Mueller somewhere. We would like to put it somewhere where there's a camera on it. Because, you know, that way.
Sure.
If somebody does destroy it, you know, then we can see who did it. So it's just a matter of getting with them. Jenna and I've talked and talked at length about this, as to where to put them. Um, we're not going to get them till the first part of October, so that would kind of scramble to have Harland get them in, but he said he would get them in whenever.
Mayor Bueller's here. Do you have a camera on anything at City Hall?
Yeah, we have cameras at City Hall, so we'd be happy to host one.
Okay, okay. I might get ahold of Harland, and, and you, would it be okay if we drilled down in the cement?
Yeah, I think we could put one on the sidewalk somewhere.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Permanent, like, or just?
I, I don't know. I'd have to check with Harland. It's going to be permanent for now, but they may be able to get in there and, and, and move them, you know, when we don't need them.
I don't think it needs to be installed permanently. I would hope that we would put.
You don't want to move when you don't, you do when you do.
Exactly. See, that's the other issue we're running into. But unless you can get to it, you know, through the locking mechanism, I, we don't know, we don't know what these new ones are going to look like. They're going to be different than the one that we have over there now. But the one we have over there now doesn't get moved. It stays all the time.
And could you, uh, do you have any idea how many ballots you might have received via that machine?
I would say, well, probably around a thousand.
About a thousand, that's significant.
It became more and more and more.
That's significant.
As, as the days went on, people were dropping them off. Um, we're still paying the post each to have them mailed back to us. Because we figured we would have to have probably 2,000 put in our drop box before that, just running it through the post office, it's 65 cents coming back, or it's just putting 50 cents on it. So we do pay the post each coming back if anybody wants to, um, you know, mail that. It doesn't cost anything to do that, but.
Did the group out of Missouri that sent, I think, almost to everybody, did that cause you, probably people filled those out and sent them in who were already?
That's why we've had to hire part-time people to come in. Those are the applications we're going through.
But did you get some new ones via that?
We did, we did. Uh, maybe so far, we might, 50, not, not a lot. It's mostly, we've already gotten them in, but, yeah, it's caused a lot of confusion for people, and that, they don't fit in the envelopes, and then there's no glue on the envelopes, and we get all those complaints, and, so we didn't do them. So, um, but, uh, we are, like I said, we are bringing in some part-time help to help get us through it, you know, things that we've learned, you know, especially with all the mail. Um, the voters at Prairie Hills, which is Precinct 27 in Clay South, will now be voting at the fairgrounds. Um, Prairie Hills, um, we can't use their facility anymore, because they didn't know what was going on, and they didn't want to say, you know, "Yeah, you can have it," and then the school not be open. They have been so accommodating, and I just, they were our last school, and we've been with them for several years, but they didn't know what the future was going to be for them, whether they were going to be open or closed. And so we used them for the August, but we had to relocate them, uh, for the November. So those people will permanently now be voting at the, the fairgrounds.
And you feel like you'll have enough staff to, uh, for the general election?
Yes. Um, we bring in, um, we've got a couple that we can bring in part-time.
I'm speaking more at the, uh, various precinct.
Oh, yeah, yes.
Voting places.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we really have gotten a lot of people that's emailed and called and wanted to work. I think the state put out a memo that said, you know, they encouraged, um, employers to let their employees off, and we did get an email from somebody that worked with Department of Child and Families, and, and they wanted to work, so we do have them scheduled to work.
Okay, my final question is, uh, do you have information from the post office, or, or do you have a suggestion of when people have, is the drop dead date for mailing in their mail ballots, so that they will get there in appropriate time?
I would, I would give it a week.
Okay.
Because we don't know, I mean, our mail goes from here to Wichita now and back. Um, the post office has assured us that we won't see any, um, lag in, you know, the delivery, and they've been really good with that, too. So, um, I don't know.
How far ahead will the people receive the ballot?
By state law, we can't mail them out till October 14th.
Okay, so October 14th.
Yeah.
Fill them out and mail them in.
Yeah.
That's, uh, gives plenty of time.
Well, but everybody procrastinates, and I, I guess to me, if, if we say you need to mail it in a week in advance.
Yeah.
10 days.
And we check our drop box several times a day, and you can mail them, or you can bring them into our office, too.
And my comment about that was, we mailed a letter the 21st of September, uh, and they have not received it yet. Now granted, that was down to Texas, but that should not be any of them.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm glad the post office has told you that there shouldn't be any delay, because from the, and Ron has stated that he has a case. I have several cases that mail is not going very quickly cross-country. And so there, no matter what Postmaster General said, there's been a delay somewhere, but.
Right.
We, if we're not going to have that locally, we'll take care of our people in this election.
At least maybe just going to Wichita and back shouldn't take too long.
Yeah.
Uh, is there anything else we can help you with to make the election go?
No, we appreciate your, we appreciate, you know, coming in and doing this. Um, we are working with our board workers. A lot of them can't wear the masks all day long, so we had some shields. And now we're told the shields aren't really the ideal thing to do, but it, they're wearing something. We're going to lose, if we tell them they have to wear masks for 15 or 16 hours a day, they're not going to be able to do it. And they can't take breaks, because they're going to be so busy. So we're still struggling with that, but otherwise, I think we've got enough workers, and we appreciate your help and your offer, so.
You know, one thing we did when we were over doing the canvassing is we come, we asked and commented the fact that there's extra caretaker to make sure that, uh, in Reno County, I'm only speaking from Reno County, that, uh, our staff at the elections does a great job to ensure that there's only one person, one vote that's living.
Thank you. Yes, we do our very best. Every time an application goes out, when it comes in, the ballot goes out, and the ballot comes in, it's all logged into our voter system, so we can track it all.
Would you tell us the, uh, I'm intrigued by precinct committeemen and committee women. A lot of that is write-in votes and so forth. Somebody said you have to have five write-in votes to, to win that, is that correct?
The precinct people are five votes?
Uh, yes, five votes.
And that's because they're elected in the August primary, um, that your townships are just. Put there to go on to the general election, so they only have to have three. But the committee people have to have five, because they, um, they actually win. They don't, they're not on the ballot in November.
Okay.
And not very many people file for those, so that's a lot of those.
So most of those people that were elected in the primary were via write-in approach?
Most of them, probably. We had some file, but.
And the five votes is per state law, I assume.
Uh-huh.
Okay. I don't think many people understand that process, and.
I didn't.
Well, and, and I, I think that we need to have as many precinct committeemen and women as possible representing both parties. It's an important position. It's the lowest tier on the hierarchy of, of the, the party system, and I don't think most people understand that. And it seems like to me maybe before, are they elected for four years? Two years?
Two.
Okay, so before the next, so it'll be the primary in two years, that, that is again.
They'll be back again.
I, I, would, would you put on your calendar for us to bring that up to people? Because I think they go to the polls, and they, nobody knows who they might want in their precinct, and in my opinion, from both parties, it would be best to have as many of those positions full as possible.
And I do think that the parties themselves work on that ahead of time, and there's that, trying to find people to serve, and that's been a difficult thing to do, uh, from the party standpoint.
But I think if we announced it via the commission, uh, a couple months ahead of time, there might be more discussion among people. I'll.
We have had a lot of phone calls this year asking what committee people do. So we're, you know, we're trying our best to explain that, but.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you for helping us.
Thank you, Jenna. Okay, we'll move on to the County Administrator Report.
Oh, we got John.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'd be in trouble if you didn't get it.
Yeah, John wants to, uh, charge for his, uh, time here, so we'll let John Deirdoff make an update on the CARES Act monies.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity. Just to give you kind of a quick update as to where we're at, and Gary Meeger couldn't be here with us today, he had another commitment. Wanted to talk a little bit about the nonprofit allocation process that we've got coming up, and then update on the state approval process, and then a little bit about round one allocations, how we compared with other, other regions or other counties. And so, uh, first of all, you had a memo, you should have a memo, that just kind of outlines the, uh, the grant process. We have right at 1.8, $1,089,000 to allocate to nonprofit organizations and the private, uh, K through 12 schools in Reno County. Um, we've established an allocation committee that would consist of Commissioner Bob Bush, uh, Randy Partington, County Administrator Gary Meeger, myself, Aubrey Patterson from the Community Founda- Foundation, Lisa Gleason from United Way, and Deborah Tufel from the Chamber. And so each of the applicants, once we get rolling here, will fill out an application, and we're in the process today, we'll finalize our application, which will be online, it'll be a online fill-in-the-blank, um, process. Uh, the Community Foundation, one of our partners, is really kind of helping us spearhead that, that effort, and, and once we, we go live with that, it'll be on various websites, and we'll get the word out to all the nonprofits. And so September 8th, we'll actually open that portal up for, uh, nonprofits to look at and start getting their information together, and then we'll start accepting applications on the 15th through, September 15th through, uh, September 30. So, uh, the, the review process and the allocation committee would sit down, uh, in a room and look at each one of the applications, look at the cri- the eligibility, uh, look at what they've submitted. We'll come up with a recommendation that we would then bring to the County Commission for final approval. Um, and not sure what that schedule looks like, but I assume it'll be, uh, early part of, uh, middle part of October. So, um, we've really got three allocations, as you see there, priorities. Priority one is for reimbursable expenses that these agencies have already incurred up until the end of August for COVID-related things, and then things they may need to do to prepare their facilities for the future. And then finally, um, which I think is going to be probably a, a really important component, is going to be the revenue loss, um, for some of these nonprofits. And, uh, we've actually got a cap, uh, per organization of $25,000 on the first two priorities, and then a cap, uh, so far of no more than 25% of their revenue from the previous year. And I think we're going to have to, as we go, adjust our thinking to that, once we see what comes through the door with some of these nonprofits. An example might be that, for whatever reason, in April, their biggest fundraiser of the year, they couldn't have, and so this would be an opportunity to replace, you know, a percentage of that. And so I think there's going to replace, you know, a percentage of that. And so I think there's going to be a lot more discussion on that at the committee level, and then with the county commission as we, as we go forward. So, so really, that's just a quick update on the allocation process. I think we're in pretty good shape going forward. And like I said, once today, we, today, we finalized the application, get that online. And, and then I'm sure there'll be a lot of questions. And Gary and I will field those questions as they come up through some of the nonprofits. So any questions on that, that piece so far?
John, it looks like you've got this very well organized for this process. You've had a little bit more time to do this group than you had on that first group.
Oh, yeah.
That we went into.
Right.
What, what are you hearing from the first group that we've made allocations to?
So, yeah, that's, that kind of leads into the next part is.
And Ron, do you have more questions on?
No, I don't. No. Covered real well. That's a memo you put out.
And so we, obviously, we, we had all of our Reno County submittals in on time by August 15th. And a big thanks to Leslie. I mean, without her, she's the one that put all the numbers on the spreadsheets and got them sent in. And so she's been just instrumental in this whole process. And so we made, we've got all those in. I was on a call last week in the KCA webinar where they kind of updated us on, on that whole process. And there's an expectation that we would hear this week, maybe as to approvals of all these submittals. And this goes across the state. And so we're thinking maybe by the end of the week. And kind of what they told us they did is they set it up into a kind of a, a red, yellow, and green. And red would be, there's a real big question on the eligibility of a certain expense. Yellow would mean there might be a couple of questions. And in green, it's a go. And they reported to us that there was only one, one red indication across the whole state. This was as of last week. They didn't say which county it was, but I think we would have heard by now if it was us. I don't think it was us. So that's really a pretty good indication that everybody's doing a pretty good job on their, their submittals. And so, you know, once we get approval, which we hope by the end of this week, then we'll start reimbursing, you know, particularly those groups that have already, you know, the first part was reimbursements for expenses they've already incurred. We'll get that out the door. And then some of the agencies will then start spending some of their request in the direct aid. Maybe they've already done that, risking that it wouldn't get approved. And we'll start that reimbursement process. And then, you know, every month, we'll have to submit a report to the state indicating kind of where we're at, what we've done. And that'll happen, you know, throughout the, throughout the, this year. So, so really feel pretty good about that. I think what was really interesting, and I, I kind of wanted to highlight that today, and I think you've got a copy of this. And this was something they showed in the webinar that, and they really just picked three, two regions, region three and region eight. Region three was southwest Kansas and region, region eight was in northeast. And really just kind of give you a look at what other counties, how they allocated their monies. And if you look at that, for example, the two regions there for schools, one of them was 17%, one was 14%. Reno County, we were 51%. Higher education, which in our case would be the community college, there was a four and a 2%. We were at 7%. Then you go over to the business nonprofit, that's our bucket there. There was a 13 and a 3%. And these were just two regions. We were at 8%. And then government institutions would be cities, what have you, 11%, 21%. We were at 7%. And then the county, which you'd be interested in more probably, the direct expense to the county, counties were, one of them was 37%, one 42%. And our county was at, at 27%. So it, it was kind of a, just interesting to see, because I was really a little bit, I don't know, nervous, isn't the right word, but as we're allocating this money, how other counties are doing it. And I think this kind of gives you an idea. And I think this shows that one of the priorities this commission set, and I think we all talked about, was the importance of getting kids back to school safely and keep them in school. And I think, you know, our allocation, that amount shows that, you know, that commitment to the public schools. So that's just a kind of, and, and I'm sure we'll get a breakdown of this on all the regions here in the next couple of weeks, but thought that'd be interesting to you. So.
That's good information. And I'm, I'm very pleased that we're providing money to the schools significantly more than these two counties shown. And I'm also proud that the county didn't take as big a hunk out as the two counties that you're showing here. So this seems to be going very well. And I thank you and Gary Meeger for working on this. I don't think we could have done this without two good people heading this up. And certainly Leslie has been huge.
Yes.
Randy, tell me, or John, either one, when they approve the money, will they send you that check to the county?
We already have the money.
Oh, you have the money?
We're not supposed to be spending it until our plan and
Okay, so you have the 13 million?
12.6 million is, yes, we have it in our bank.
And how are you keeping that separate from everything else that you do within the county? Have you created a couple new accounts? Is that how?
I believe, yes. Leslie worked on that with Brenda in the treasurer's office to set up to make sure that it's completely separate. So it does not get touched for anything else that we can track. It also does not earn interest.
And so will John and Gary approve these future expenditures?
We, we've technically have done that in their application. And assuming the state approves that, which I think for the most part, I mean, I, I can remember looking through, there was one in particular, I won't mention it, but that I guarantee you would have been probably redlined up there that we, that we cut out. But for the most part, the districts were in, everybody was pretty good about the criteria.
Okay. So let's say if 308 had 10,000 for a mask or something, they would just have to tell the county that they've spent that money or send some indication.
They would send us documentation, invoice, and then we would reimburse them.
Right. And the other important thing about this whole thing, we talked about this yesterday, is that these direct aid plans were programs that people say, here's what we think we want to do, and here's an estimate. Well, at the end of the year, they might not have done this, or their costs might have been less. And so there may be an opportunity to amend and take some of that money without sending it back to the county or back to the state and reallocate that. For example, in this nonprofit group, if we find that we've got more needs than money, you would have the opportunity to go back and do that, or amend it to any other use within the county or other district. So we'll see how that all plays out. Because I suspect a lot of the estimated, estimated expenses are like anything. You budget this and you only, you only spend this. And so we certainly want to make sure we capture all that money here for Reno County.
And, and I believe you're looking at the nonprofit daycare group as being part of this?
Yes.
If they apply.
Big, yes. And that's a big priority here, I think, or at least in conversation. I know it is on the state level. They've talked about that. And so hopefully, we'll be able to pay some, some good attention to those areas.
I think we've heard from you and Gary before, and thank you for the job you've done. The one we haven't heard from that's done a tremendous amount of work, and I think you could probably talk about it, is Leslie.
Yes. She's, I, I mean, early on, when we started this process, I made a comment about, man, how we, you know, the finance side of this thing. And Randy said, don't worry, we've got, you know, Leslie's going to be a big part of that. And her, and Gary, knowing her, has worked with her, she's just been great to work with and really kind of kept us on task as far as the eligibility requirements, the spreadsheets, and working with all the entities on how to fill them out. And, and she'll continue to be a big part of this going forward.
A lot of extra time.
Yes. Appreciate her a whole lot.
Okay. Thank you, John, for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. I apologize for not reading my agenda and Commissioner Hurst keeping me on track.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that you were on track.
Okay.
We approved this.
Are, are you ready for the county administrator's report?
I may have a few.
Okay, okay. Mr. Partington.
Okay. Just want to let you know, next week on September 8th, I'm going to be a part of a Zoom meeting with some engineers and Don about sewer districts in the Yoder and Habit. There are two sewer districts. There's major repairs needed. And that's been a discussion, I believe, for well over a year. But just kind of giving you an update that we're meeting with engineers next week on September 8th. And that's going to start a long process of major improvements down there that we're going to have to discuss, make decisions on what to improve, and how to finance the projects, because they don't have a lot of users.
Mm-hmm.
So it's going to be hard to find the money to actually finance the projects that are needed for the sewer districts to continue to operate. So I just kind of wanted to bring that to your attention. On Wednesday of this week, the fire chiefs are having their monthly meeting. And so I'm going to attend that. I just kind of wanted to give you guys a heads up. That'll be the first opportunity, the tunity that they've had a, truly had a monthly meeting that I'll be able to attend. So.
And when is that fire report due back?
He's hoping, the guy from Five Bugle is hoping to get something, I believe Adam said maybe by the, he was hoping the end of September, early October to get something. There are some health issues, so there are some delays in being able to finalize it.
I see.
I believe the Sheriff Campbell has met with commissioners, kind of had a chance to talk to, to you. So I just wanted to mention, to make sure you guys are okay with the reallocation of some funds within his budget for 2021, to take some overtime line item numbers, move them, do a journal entry, move them to a salary line item to add a patrol or another employee, which I believe it's in patrol for the sheriff, to kind of help with, he thinks he can cut overtime and more, and that this one position will help. I think he's wanting maybe for the next budget process to add even an additional one. So it'd be two total, but one at this time with the reallocation of funds. So I just want to make sure you guys are okay with that before that gets taken care of.
He assured me that he was sure that he could use the overtime money to fund that position. And with that assurance, I had no problem with it.
I would, same way with me, with the acknowledgement that, that next year's going to be hard to do a budget, too. So that, that needs to fall within his budget. He's the manager of his budget.
Okay. Then, just an update. We're still working on audio and visual options for the public hearing later this month for the wind energy regulations that will take place at the state fair, fair offices. So I think I sent you guys an email. It's give or take about $5,000 to lease equipment and someone to man it from a company out of Wichita that had, has done some work with Reno County. That's one option. We're still looking if there's any local options, or if Mike can make adjustments to our current system to allow for 10 microphones and speakers to not only here in the building, but also to then be able to stream it live online. So if you guys have any opinions on that, let me know. I, I have talked with, with you guys about a, I don't have the notes here, but a local company, individual that maybe, may have the, or the equipment needed.
I think I mentioned a couple this morning to you, Randy.
Good.
I would encourage that Mike, if, if he has to be involved fully direct with that, like Mr. Matthews, that he gets some help with it. Get some staff to help him with that.
And then just the other thing, census signs. We had five kind of yard signs that we took for, or that the city of Hutchinson let us borrow. And we've put those up in a few locations here on county property to remind people it's not too late to take part in the 2020 census. They have the rest of this month to do that. And then Don has put up digital electronic signs. I believe he put, he was going to put one up, actually, he has put one up at, on K-61 southbound, just north of 30th Avenue, and then south of Woody Seat Bridge northbound to remind people.
Good. I haven't seen those. I've seen the cities at A and Adams, and it shows up very, very well. I think that was a good idea. Was that your idea, Commissioner Hurst?
Well, I said something about the schools anyway.
Yeah.
But I did write a
Yeah. Have we asked the schools?
I have not gotten around to that part. I was working on these others to, for the county facilities and work with Don, which he put those up, I believe, today.
I did write a little editorial with if they printed or not regarding this. I sent it to the Messenger and Nisko Valley News and a record for the, for the county weekly newspaper. Those three.
Good. Other things, Randy?
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, do you have anything today?
Yeah, I, last Thursday, we had our monthly SCED meeting, South Central Kansas Economic Development District. And I asked the question that you brought up about how they were progressing on that COVID CV, or the CDBG CV program. And I should hear back from them here shortly with regarding to the timetable that they're looking at. And so I know they had 13. And then the state, they mentioned also, the state changed some direction on them, on their rules and regs. And then we asked some extra things, too. And so that's definitely in the works. And at least we don't have to have a strict timetable on this. But we need to get it out and help these people as soon as possible. So I did speak with the grant writers down there, commissioner sellers.
I wish that was moving fast.
Yeah, I did. And also, I, reports that SCED has really had a good month. And they have their reorganization internally somewhat on the different programs, and have seen a lot of interest in, in both their 504 programs, 7A, and the microloan programs. And they've got quite a bit of interest in that now. And have done some work computer-wise to make the application process a lot smoother. And the housing portion of that grant program is, is very strong. They're getting asked to work out in other areas to help finish up projects. So that's all I have.
Okay. I just have one item this morning, and this is a follow-up from last week. I've had a couple people mention it to me, and I'm concerned myself. I, I really think RCAT needs to rethink this Walmart transfer situation. I, if you go out there and look at the site, that site is a long, long ways away from the Walmart door. And I think our, our group needs to rethink how they're going to potentially drop off closer to the door of Walmart than that transfer site. It, when the weather gets bad and, and maybe icy and so forth, I just don't think that that's going to work. And that's helping our elderly people, which use RCAT so much. I, I think she needs to rethink how they drop off at Walmart.
I appreciate you going out and looking at that and assessing that. And since you've done that, I agree.
You agree. Well, it is older and, and people less capable of walking long distance that use the RCAT program. And I just think we can do a better job than leaving them 300 feet from the door. So if we'd look at that, please. There's no other items. I think Commissioner Hurst has an item to move into executive session.
Yes, I would move at the board recess into executive session for a period of 10 minutes for the purpose of discussing a non-elected personnel matter in the Reno County Health Department. At the conclusion of the executive session, the board will reconvene in regular session at which it is anticipated a second motion to go back into executive session to discuss a privileged legal matter with the board's legal counsel concerning Pretty Prairie Wind LLC litigation pending in district court is expected. And for the first executive session, request that the county administrator and county counselor remain. There will be no decision this board following the executive session. And I'd like this to begin at 10:30.
Yes. I second that.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.